All right, we are live on the Facebook right now.
All right, so we can share. I'm gonna grab my phone, I'm efforting a share.
There we go.
We had a false start if people are watching now. There was a, there was a moment where we realized that the card was sitting here on our table.
Yep.
And it didn't work.
I can't find it.
It's on the Boss Hogg page.
Well, we're only, uh, we're only four minutes late though.
That's all right.
And our audio is working, so.
Ed didn't mess it up.
Ed didn't mess it up at all, we're doing great. Live now with at Ed. You got Ed and Edward on there. You're, you're both ways. You got your country and western. One's, one's your, uh, one's your page and one's your, your, your personal one, I guess, huh?
Right.
Got them all. There's already five people watching live, alright. And my phone is making noise as always.
Well, we know the, we know the audio feeds working now.
We know the, we know the culprit. Alright, here we go. Everybody ready?
I'm ready.
We feel good, alright. Welcome to the Boss Hogg Liberty Podcast on the We Are Libertarians Network. I'm your host Jeremiah Morel and as always I'm joined by our co-host Dakota Davis.
Hey, what's going on Jer?
Hey buddy, we're back at it again.
We are back for, uh, the fifty-second week in a row.
Uh, fif- episode fifty-two, it's unreal. That is just crazy. That's like a year's worth of episodes.
Yeah, it really is insane.
Uh, this show is about our lives in rural Indiana. It's a show about folks who are involved in politics. We promise that our episodes are gonna be a fun and an easy listen. We interview people who are influencers, elected officials, political experts, and people that we just find interesting. Today, in the, uh, the third co-host seat, we have an emergency backup replacement co-host, Mr. Chase Payton.
What up, I'm here.
You literally are here on, this is probably the second shortest amount of notice we've ever given a co-host. Danny Morel showed up and climbed a fence to get on the show.
Remembered that, that was a good episode.
I think that was the very first one.
But, uh, this is, uh, this is impressive. Our, our advertised co-host Cade Koger, uh, is down with an injury. Uh, we're gonna violate some HIPAA laws, but apparently his ten-year-old.
Ten-month-old.
Ten-month-old, not his ten-year-old, ten-month-old opened up a can of whoop ass on him with a jujitsu move and sliced his eye. And he is, uh, he's, hopefully he's seeking medical attention.
Well, he just commented on the livestream, so hopefully he's in the waiting room of a, of a doctor's office.
At least he can see that we're on here now.
Yeah.
Alright, so, in the, uh, in the hot seat, is it the hot seat Ed?
Nah, it's pretty comfortable.
We have Ed Tarantino. Ed is, uh, is here continuing our candidate series. Ed is running for county commissioner here in Henry County. Uh, you are, this is the first time you're running for office, right?
Yes, it is.
And that is a Dunreeh accent I'm detecting from you. Dun- born and bred in Dunreeh, Indiana, I'm sure.
Western Dunreeh.
Western Dunreeh.
I was, uh, raised in Dunreeh, Indiana, so we already, I already have something in common. It's wonderful.
Yeah, no, so you, so you are an import, you've been here longer than probably Dakota and I have been alive combined together, but you've, you've held on to the accent a little bit. You're from New Jersey originally.
New Jersey, the Garden State.
The Garden State.
There's one garden there.
Used to be, used to be home to the, the New Jersey Nets.
Yes.
And it is home to the New York Jets and Giants.
And the Jersey Giants at one time.
Yeah.
The Jersey Giants, I didn't know that. That, hmm.
They're gone.
It's also, it's also home to Jersey Shore.
Uh, yes, Chase, Chase would know that one, of course.
The Jersey Giants sounded a lot more interesting than that.
So, it has been an interesting week around here. Uh, we're gonna, we're gonna interview Ed and talk with him a little bit, but we're gonna kinda cover the local news. Uh, Dakota, we, uh, we noticed over the weekend that, uh, well, on April first, April Fool's Day.
Yes.
There was a big article in our local paper, The Courier-Times, who has famously covered us. We were, we were a front-page story one time in The Courier-Times. They profiled the podcast.
It's right behind Ed.
Uh, so, April first, they ran a story, thought it was an April Fool's joke, about a wild turkey that's been running the streets of Newcastle. And, uh, it's been tormenting cars and getting in the way.
So this turkey, this turkey, it's literally just a wild turkey, like, looks like you should see it in the woods, and it has been crossing the street between, so, in Newcastle, Indiana, there's a cemetery on the east and west side of the main highway that runs, uh, north and south through it, and he's been crossing the highway from cemetery to cemetery. And there, like you said, there was the article written by Travis, uh, Wyke.
Yep, and then it made, uh, it made news. That, that article led to at least two, maybe three network stations out of Indianapolis coming to Newcastle and running stories, so then all of your out-of-town friends go, "What in the world is going on in your town?"
Yep.
And then by Sunday, the turkey had become self-aware, found an iPhone, and started a Facebook page.
He's a self-aware turkey, like, uh, kinda like if you, we have any Rick and Morty fans that watch this, like, whenever the dog became self-aware in the, in the show, but hopefully he's not gonna try to take over the town. His, uh, his Facebook page, he is a little bit sassy though.
Yeah, he's, uh, he likes to talk in caps locks and is very aggressive against people.
And I'll be honest, I'm a little jealous. He has way too many page likes.
Oh my gosh.
He's got more than Boss Hogg Liberty.
Yeah, and, and since Sunday, this thing's got over eight hundred page likes.
Think we might have to take him out.
So when this, when this all started, of course, we are front-running fools at Boss Hogg Liberty, so we said, "We are gonna capitalize off this thing." Ed, alright, this, this turkey, people were freaking out on Sunday, and it was either this thing is a treasure for the city and it's gotta be kept, or it's a, it's gonna get somebody killed, it's in the road, and needs to be run over. So we said, "Is this our mascot, or is it, is it something that needs to be shot?" So Chase, what were the results of our poll?
Alright, three hundred and fifty-five people voted on this.
Three hundred and fifty-five people took time out of their busy schedules to vote in an internet poll about the future of a wild turkey.
A turkey, yes. And, uh, our mascot won by seventy-two percent.
Seventy-two percent of the people wanna keep this thing.
Twenty-eight percent wanted to eliminate it.
Yeah, we put the, we put a GIF of Little Sebastian from Parks and Recreation as the, as the mascot option.
I think that's why it might have won, 'cause I, if I see something of Little Sebastian, I'm just gonna automatically poke on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Everybody loves Little Sebastian. Ed, do you have a turkey position, an official turkey position? This is the first tough kid, a tough question of the Boss Hogg Liberty Podcast.
I'd, I liked the turkey. I, I saw it in the paper. I think he has a great future.
Well, th- th- this turkey has been like, it's had, once again this morning, my, the Smiley Morning Show, and some crap radio out of Indianapolis, but whatever, it's not, it's not MS or Q ninety-five.
I used to love that in high school, okay?
Yeah, okay. Well, they, they, they ran a story, they had John, John A. from Newcastle, and then my sister called in to the show. She was on Smiley this morning.
Did she really?
Hannah called in, yeah.
That's awesome.
And she, she promoted the thing or whatever, saying, "Hey, you gotta check out this Facebook page." She said it has three hundred likes. What's that, like, eight hundred likes now?
Yep.
Uh, but there's been a scare, the last two days, there's been a scare, did the turkey get hit at the end of the day? Uh, people thought it was dead. Uh, and then today you open up the paper, and it is, it's the front-page news again.
It's the front-page newspaper, and they promoted the Facebook page, like, somehow they were able to contact whoever it is that runs the, the turkey's Facebook page and have them, uh, have them sit down with an, for an interview as the turkey, and, uh, it was, it was genius. It was, ah, I was laughing so hard.
So we should get him on the show?
Well, if we, we're trying. We, we, we thought we might have a chance to get it to Skype in, but the, we, we couldn't get our phone board working, so maybe if the turkey's not dead by next week, maybe we'll, maybe we'll try to get it on when, uh, when we have our show with Ken and Gray. Um, I, we'll see. Poor guy's running against me, and we're gonna make him talk to a turkey on the radio.
Maybe you can just call in. Maybe you can just call in.
So, uh, yeah, so that's there, and the mayor granted a full pardon. Did you read that in the paper today?
No.
The, the mayor says the turkey's fine. He answered to the poll, he listened to the will of the people. No word on whether or not the Newcastle, uh, high school team is gonna change from the Trojans to the Turkeys, that, uh, we'll just have to see what happens when we get to the football season later this summer.
Not too far out of town, there's probably fifteen turkeys in a lady's yard that I know.
In her yard?
In her yard, and she's only about two or three miles out of town.
Well, I know they use.
Could be one of her lost turkeys.
It could be. I know they use chicken manure to fertilize grass sometimes, so maybe, maybe it's really good for a yard.
I know where I'm going hunting now.
Well, it said in the paper, you can't hunt on public ground, but you could on private, so if you go over there, you know, if you get permission from the folks at the cafe where you had one of your events.
Cafe Royal?
Yeah, if you go over to Cafe Royal, and they let, they give you permission to hunt, it, it, the, the paper in the article said, the paper article today said bow and arrows, okay. You can't use, you can't use a firearm, but bow and arrows is just fine.
Okay. What about a, what about a hatchet?
Well, I don't know. I don't know.
I think a hatchet would work. Maybe throwing stars would be better.
Ooh, that'd be cool.
If you could, if you could hunt with throwing stars, I wonder if that's illegal.
Now, all the little children love this turkey by now. Can hatchet the turkey.
Yeah, Ed says you can't, and you're going against the mayor. You got a county commissioner candidate and the mayor that are against you, Chase. It's not looking good.
Yes.
They voted, they voted to keep the turkey around.
Okay, I'll, I'll give it one more week.
One more week. We'll see, we'll see if he's still around. So then, uh, I've gone to a couple of events, uh, this last couple of weeks, uh, or this, this week. Monday night, you had a big event, Ed. Uh, up at the Thousand Degree, I get this name right, Thousand Degree Brick Oven Wood Fired Pizza in Mount Summit, Indiana, is that right?
Great place, great pizza.
I love that place.
So they had, you had a, they've got a big party room, and you had it filled up. You had pizza coming out your ears, you had cookies, you had a huge crowd. What, uh, what was that event about?
It was just to meet people, just to say hi, try, give out my buttons, my pamphlets, and it went very well. A lot of people came, even some people that I didn't know, so.
Well, that's good.
I knew, I knew a lot of them, but, uh, there were some new people.
What's, uh, what's your favorite kind of pizza?
I just get a plain pizza or mushrooms on it.
I like mushrooms on it.
Now, my wife puts everything on hers, so, so if we're sharing, I usually get everything.
I was gonna say you get whatever she's eating, right?
But otherwise, I just like pretty much plain pizza.
Yeah, I usually get everything. I like a slice of pizza that weighs about five pounds by the time it's done. There's everything on it.
It was. It was a cool event. I, I popped in for a minute, 'cause Ed, Ed had messaged me and said, "Hey, can we have a cup of coffee or something?" And I was, I hadn't had a chance to catch up with you, so I said, "I'm gonna try to get to his event." So I, I stopped in on Monday, and, uh, you were there, Betsy Mills, our guest from last week, she had made an appearance. You know you're doing well when other candidates crash your event. You're doing good.
It was unexpected.
And then, uh, you had, um, Jonathan Lamb, the candidate for Congress, he stopped in.
Peg Stefan Dell.
Peg, Peg was there. I didn't get a chance to meet Peg. She's scheduled to be on the show here in a few weeks, so, uh, we'll get a chance to talk to her then, but, uh, it was a great event. You did good.
Yeah, I liked it.
Did you raise some money? Shake some, shake some people down for cash too?
We got a little bit of money, but it's not about money. We have, I think we have enough money. We ran a pretty, uh, low-budget campaign, but I have fourteen campaign managers, so.
Fourteen campaign managers. You're not one of them, are you?
No.
That's, yeah, that's how it goes.
We're a little disjointed, but it works out.
It's working. And then, uh, let's see, I also, another one of our guests that we've had on, I got to, uh, to hang out with, uh, Lane Seekman.
Yeah, Lane Seekman.
Democrat runner for Congress. I saw him this week. On Tuesday, he came through Newcastle, Tuesday morning. He had a meet and greet with Jack's Donuts, and he said he'll buy your coffee, and I'm like, "If I get a Democrat to buy a cup of coffee for me, I'm gonna do that." It's been the first time they've put their hands in their pockets in a long time.
That's hilarious.
I got, uh, I got Lane, he gave me ten dollars, got, I bought my coffee, and I gave him the change back. It was solid.
I saw my grandma Tuesday morning, and she said, "I'm pretty sure that I just saw Jeremiah at Jack's Donuts." And I was like, "Pretty sure? Or you're sure?" And she goes, "I've only met him twice, so I'm not a hundred percent certain."
I'm pretty recognizable.
I mean, you are famous.
Uh, well, local, locally famous.
Local celebrity.
So, uh, yeah, it was, uh, Lane was there, uh, he had, he got Darren Jacobs, the, the incredible, there's nothing left of Darren Jacobs, by the way. He has slimmed down. I don't know if it's because we've ruined his reputation and he had to, he had to change his, his, his appearance or what.
We keep calling.
But Darren is, there's nothing left to him anymore.
We keep calling Darren the token socialist, so he's following the socialist diet, where.
That might be what's happening.
He's not eating.
In the breadlines.
Yep.
So, uh, Darren was there, the mayor showed up, uh, I got to meet Bev Matthews from the Community Foundation, uh, I met the, the Democrat chair, your, your counterpart, the Democrat chairwoman was there. Alan Bramlett, the former Democrat chair, was there. Um, so yeah, Dale Cole, the legendary Dale Cole, he made an appearance.
Legendary Dale Cole.
Uh, when Dale got there, I had to go, 'cause it was time to go to work, and I wanted to give him a chair, so, um, but it was fun, it was, it was neat. You got, you got to hang out with all those guys. They didn't run me out, so. As a libertarian, it's cool. We get to talk to the Republicans and the Democrats and Libertarians and the Independents, and they, nobody really knows what to do with us, so they just kinda con, you know, have conversations, and generally they don't hate us, so.
So we, we got a few more Patreon subscribers this month.
Man, we've got, we picked up a few.
Yeah, we did, we did. Uh, I'm gonna run through the list here really quick. Uh, so, up at the top, man, the people that are just giving us the bacon here. Uh, Christie Avery and Brantley Spicer, both of you guys are super fans. Uh, I think Brantley has claimed this, the title of super-duper Boss Hogg Liberty fan, and then, uh.
Well, he's always in first, so.
Yeah. And we have Mary Hershey and Rebecca Baker, Sarah Potter, Kirsten Kronk. Uh, she's new, Kirsten's new.
Kirsten's new, she signed up today?
Today. Chad Mallico, Nancy.
Nancy Dietz?
Dietz. I, I did not wanna butcher the last name. And then we have Jamie Owens, Craig DeCosta, your parents, Joyce and Paul Morel. My parents still haven't signed up.
Still waiting on Jeff and, Jeff and Don Davis to do the right thing.
What's going on with that? Then we have Zachary Bertram, my neighbor, and Corey Murphy and Aaron Ewer.
Man, thank you guys very much. That's incredible.
It's awesome.
It's really tumbling. We've, we set a goal of, uh, five hundred dollars a month, and we are just about at the halfway point on that. It's unreal.
Yep.
So, at that point, we're gonna have, uh, we've already purchased our first thing, the, the Shure device to, uh, to be able to per, to do our phone calls and to be, to take remote callers. We've got that in place. Uh, hopefully have, we'll have it configured within a week. Dakota's holding up a poster. What's the story on the poster?
So I said the, I said last week that we didn't have the poster and yet, that because I didn't expect anybody to be pledging in the, in the twenty-five dollar and the fifty-dollar reward section. So I, I didn't have one designed yet, 'cause I thought I had plenty of time. Well, it turns out I was very wrong, and just in a couple of days, people had already subscribed to those, so we have a, we have a poster printed out, and it, uh, it looks like a newspaper. Um, it's got pictures of all of our different logos, says it's the greatest podcast ever produced, and East Central Indiana's favorite podcast. Uh, it talks a little bit about tinfoil time and our logos, and, uh, we're gonna be sending those out by the, uh, the end of the weekend.
Very cool. So if people are, uh, people are interested, join the Patreon, patreon.com/BossHoggLiberty to, uh, to sign up and join. Um, and then the, uh, of course, you do get the premium content. You get, uh, tinfoil time, and then some additional bonus audio, and I, I hear that there's gonna be a, a special bonus edition uh, avail, or a special bonus poster if you sign up at the Libertarian Convention. So if you come to the Libertarian Convention in May, uh, there's, uh, there's a pretty good chance you're gonna get, uh, you get to, uh, get a poster down there, signing up at any level, so. Enough about that. Patreon.com/BossHoggLiberty. We should probably talk to Ed. We had him drive all the way in here. We've, uh, we've, we've been bantering back and forth. Hopefully we put him at ease.
I'm, I'm ready.
You're good to go.
There we go.
Good to go. So, let's, let's learn about you a little bit. We, we know that you're from New Jersey, and, uh, like Betsy last week, you appear to be ridiculously well-educated. You, uh, you went to Montclair State College in New Jersey, and you studied health and physical education. So you were, you were a gym teacher?
Yes.
Amongst many things. You've had like four hundred careers.
I like it that way. I try to learn something every thing I did, and I do get bored easy, so I change a lot.
There you go, so I have.
Different opportunities came along, and I took them.
There's nothing wrong with that.
So you're also the second, uh, the second Ball State graduate in a row we've had on here. We've had a lot of Ball State people, 'cause you've got a master's degree in physical education from Ball State.
Yes, because when I started teaching in Indiana, they required it.
Really?
They don't anymore now, but you had to have a master's degree to teach.
And I was teaching in Cambridge City at the time, living here in Henry County.
You taught at Lincoln, then?
Taught at Lincoln and drove there, coached all year long, 'cause I coached football, wrestling, and track. And I had to get that master's at night after coaching, so.
Oh my gosh. You were a, you were a busy man whenever you had to go through that, get that master's degree.
Alright, let's talk about football for a minute.
Sure.
Will you, uh, what kind of record you have as a football, were you assistant coach, head coach, Lincoln? What's the story?
I was assistant coach.
Assistant coach.
Yes.
You do have a little bit of a Ted Marchabrota vibe to you, actually. You look, you, you and Ted Marchabrota, who was the Colts head coach in the nineties and the seventies, Chase, uh, you, you guys could be doppelgangers. Like, you could be his stunt double. You know that? Everybody ever tell you that?
No, but I did coach with a pretty interesting guy, Joe Siminski, who's passed away now, but he actually played professional football with Bart Starr.
Really? And he played for the Packers?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, he was the head coach, and, uh, I was one of his assistants.
On a scale of one to ten, how much did you enjoy making your kids run in practice?
Ah, not too much.
Not too much?
He made them run, he just didn't like it.
Only when they were really bad?
Yeah, they have to be in shape, sure.
I, I, I didn't like that. I always thought that that was kinda pointless whenever you had to run for a punishment. It's like, if, if we lost, why are you going to just make us run? Why aren't we practicing more?
Am I, am I close? I'm holding up a picture of Ted Marchabrota to Dakota. Is that, is that close?
I can see it.
Yeah.
That was very close. Sometimes my coach would make me run even when we won.
Somewhat close.
But I was fat, so.
Ed looks at me and says, "You just held up a picture of an old man to me. What are you doing?" I'm gonna get run out of my own studio. I love Ted Marchabrota. He was the Colts head coach, he was the Ravens head coach. Uh, Dakota's the one athlete in the, in the crowd. He was, he was the tight end.
I was the tight end. That's correct, yep.
That's what I was.
Really? There's a second thing in common. Dunreeh, and then, uh, and then a tight end.
Yeah, the Dunreeh thing is not real at all.
It's not?
No.
You made it up.
It's ma- I made it up. You live, you live out by Catas, right?
Nah, I live by Sulphur Springs.
Sulphur, alright.
I did live in Cat. That was the first place I lived, 'cause my wife's from Cat.
Okay. Uh, that was, that's what I remembered from Monday.
So you were, you're trying to make us fake news there, Jeremiah, by, by making us tell fake stories.
Just wanna see what rumors we get started and see where it goes.
I've driven through Dunreeh many times, so.
Yeah, that's about the extent of what most people do. So you were, you were a Marine Corps officer from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen seventy-six?
Yes.
Was that a?
One of the most fun times of my life.
It was a fun time?
Oh yeah, that was great.
Huh. I don't think that I've ever heard anybody say fun with that much enthusiasm talking about the Marines before. Usually they're like, "Oh, it's tough, built character."
It was the most fun I ever had, I think.
There we go.
Where, uh, where were you stationed? Were you, you stayed side, or did you go overseas?
Uh, I was in Quantico for about nine months, 'cause you go three months OCS, and then you go to what they call the basic school. Uh, but you're already a lieutenant then, so, that was pretty much a gentleman's course after that.
Because you, because you already had your degree, you got, uh, you got the, you didn't have the rough treatment. You were, you were an officer.
Well, after the first three months.
Right.
The first three months, they give you the rough treatment. And that was, you know, just at the end of the Vietnam War, so everyone that, all the DI's and whatnot, just came back from Vietnam. So they were well-prepared to give you the, the full treatment.
Yeah. You, you came into a very, a very battle-hardened time, the people, the people that were, that were bringing you up.
And if, if you were in reasonable shape, it wasn't so bad.
Were you in reasonable shape when you went in, or you were when you went out, got out?
I was in good shape. I just finished wrestling in college, so I was in good shape.
Oh, there you go. Oh, so going in and out.
The poor guys that came in a little out of shape, it was very hard for them.
They wouldn't be saying it was the most fun.
No. I'd like it.
So then you, uh, after nineteen seventy-six, you, uh, joined the Army National Guard, stayed in there until two thousand and two, and you're a retired lieutenant colonel. Why did you, why did you decide to make the transfer from, uh, the Marine Corps to the Army National Guard?
Well, the Marine Corps is a small outfit, really, and Marine Corps reserves are much smaller, but it wasn't anything really close. Closest place was Indianapolis, and it was a communications outfit, so. I was infantry, so I went in the infantry in the, uh, National Guard.
Alright, well, that makes sense. That makes total sense. And then, uh, so you were, you were in the, uh, active in the military whenever you were, you were teaching and coaching and getting your master's degree?
Right.
So you, uh, not only were you coaching all those and attending night classes for your master's degree, but you were also an active, uh, member of the military.
I like to stay busy.
I guess so, gosh.
Surprised you didn't run for county commissioner in nineteen seventy-eight too, just for, just for the hell of it.
Have you ever taken a nap?
Yeah, no, I don't take a nap. I fall asleep in the chair now, quite often, actually.
That's a, I, I guess that counts as a nap. But, uh, you, so you taught PE, uh, at Lincoln from seventy-eight to eighty-one. Um, and coached football, wrestling, girls' track, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh.
He already said it once, I don't know, you have to repeat it.
I know, well, I just can't get over the fact of how busy he kept himself. Like, I feel like I'm really busy right now, and I can't even imagine doing all that stuff. That's, I'm just really impressed by that, I guess.
Had kids too.
I'm just gonna say it, Dakota, you're really lazy.
Am I? Yeah, maybe you're right.
Now, this is a big undertaking here.
This podcast, no small thing here. Building a studio and trying to, trying to sound competent on the, on the fake internet radio.
Yeah, trying, trying my hardest.
Hosting a TV show.
Uh, you, then you were the, the chief of doctrine, uh, at the United States Army Physical Fitness School in, uh, Fort Benjamin, which is in, in Lawrence, Indiana, if people don't know. So the, I'm, what, what exactly is the chief of doctrine?
That was the greatest job I ever had, because it was the ultimate job for a gym teacher.
Really nice. Do you have a gold-plated whistle?
I have a brass whistle.
A brass whistle.
Close enough.
But that job just came about by luck, actually. The Secretary of the Army at the time, John Omar, said the army was out of shape. And so he started a physical fitness school, and it happened to be in Indianapolis. And they hired about eighteen civilians. Uh, all of them had master's degrees, five of them had doctorates, to write the curriculum. And I went up there for an interview, and I got the job, and what it turned out, we spent a few months developing the course, and it was a train-to-trainer course. What you did was train soldiers to go out and train other soldiers.
Oh, okay, yeah.
So we went all over the world, all over the United States. The army's big, had about seven hundred and fifty thousand at the time, and, uh, like I said, it was the ultimate gym teacher job.
Yeah, that sounds awesome.
Traveled to Europe seven or eight times, Korea, and all over the United States, so, and with great people, it was, it was a lot of fun.
And you did that for eleven years?
Yeah, about eleven, eleven and a half, so.
Yeah, that's really cool. That sounds like an awesome job.
I would have kept that job, except that it was bad timing. Uh, my son was a senior in high school, and he played, uh, football and basketball, you know how basketball is in Indiana.
Yeah.
Kind of a big deal.
And I was just building a new house, and I didn't even get to move in it yet, when they closed Fort Harrison. And we were gonna go to Fort Benning, Georgia, which didn't sound too good to me.
Yep.
So I quit the job, but.
So after that, you, you opened up your own business and started operating, uh, Tarantino signs?
Right.
So, uh, what kind of signs did you make at that, at your shop?
All different kinds. It was, at the time, they still painted quite a few signs.
Okay.
I still do that today. I painted that Thousand Degree Pizza.
Oh, did you really?
All the flames and things out there.
You have, uh, the first time your name was ever, I ever heard your name, was the, uh, piece of, it's a mural that was done at the Henry County Saddle Club. There's a horse out there on the, I think it's on the restrooms. Uh, on one, one of the sets of restrooms out there, but it's a really neat horse that you painted.
Right, they get the best muralists to paint on restroom.
Yeah, it's, it's premium stock. And then, uh, later on, I think you did some more out at the Arts Park as well, right? Didn't you maybe the?
Well, I started a camp for kids, and they've done quite a few. We had that three years, and that whole wall on Fifteenth Street.
On the Hope Building?
On the Hope Building. That was two years' work. And then, uh, we also did it at the Little League Diamond on the concession stand. I think we have eleven or twelve there. And we're still looking for a place. We're gonna do it again this June.
Am, am I giving the wrong guy credit, uh, for the ones that are on the Arts Building, on, uh, over by the Arts Park? There's like a Robert Indiana painting. That, that's not yours?
Well, I shared that with, uh, uh, Steve Wider.
Okay, alright. So you, you get partial credit.
We did it together, yeah.
Alright, well, that's, that's a cool one too. Uh, yeah, so all, basically any of the murals in the, in the, in the city, we're just giving you credit at this point.
Yeah.
And, and, and you were signed up, I, I, I assume you're still planning on doing it. The, uh, there, the, the new Veterans Museum, uh, you're gonna be putting some murals in downstairs in the basement down there as well.
Yeah, if that comes about, I did, uh, submit a plan for that, uh, and if they like the plan, then sure, I'll do that.
So you volunteered. It's a matter, the ball's in their court on that one.
Right.
Alright, very cool.
So then, uh, that, after you did that, you went back into the teaching world at Newcastle Community Schools, or was it Chrysler High School then?
Well, I was actually at the Newcastle Alternative School.
Oh, okay.
So I had to go back to college at Ball State and get, uh, certified in special ed.
There you go.
The reason I got out of the sign business, my dad was here, and he, he's the actual artist and sign painter, a lot better than I was, but, uh, he had dementia. And it's hard to have business when the boss has dementia. So I decided it was better to go back to teach school, and he still hung on for a few years, painting, 'cause he had all his skills. He just couldn't remember if, it was hard, because, uh, he couldn't remember if he got paid for things or not. I said, "Dad, did you get paid for that?" "Well, I don't know."
That'd be a rough way to run a business.
I decided to go back and teach school, and I still helped him part-time.
Sam Cross just said in the, in the livestream comments that you were a master woodworker. Is that, is there truth to that? What's the story behind that?
No, it's not true. I, I taught woodshop, but I had no experience in woodshop.
Hold up your hands. How many, how many digits you got?
And I guess, at the alternative school, I'm pretty proud to say that no one was seriously injured in, in the twelve years I taught there. Uh, we had a couple little Band-Aid accidents, but nothing too bad.
There you go. He was a, so he's a master wo- woodworker, but, uh, you, you learned it all on the job then, is what I'm, is what I'm taking.
On a job training.
There we go.
So your dad, your dad was an artist, and, uh, he, he did the painting. Is Quentin Tarantino any relation to you? The, the, uh, the movie maker?
I call him Cousin Quentin, but I don't think he's a relation.
Not really, really.
Actually, I have a family tree that goes back to the. Actually, I have a family tree that goes back to the eighteen seventies or eighties, and there's about three hundred people in it. But it's only one of five brothers, and Quentin's not there.
He's not on the list.
I'm thinking he might be one of the other four brothers.
Could be. I, you don't find yourself wanting to make things real bloody all the time?
He, he's made a couple of good ones that I really liked. Like, made a, which I can't even think of. I'm drawing, gonna draw a blank on here. Uh, Django Unchained, that was a good one.
That was a good one. He made the.
Inglourious Basterds, yeah.
That was a good one, too.
Everybody good, loves a good Nazi-killing movie.
Yeah, he's pretty violent.
He is. A little rough.
I'm a peace-loving guy.
We're libertarians, so I guess we should say we are as well, the anti-war party. But, uh, so now you have a whole long list of volunteer work. Um, we're gonna publish your show notes for the people that are subscribing on the Patreon account. And there's links to all of the different things. But, uh, in twenty fourteen, you started the Artistry Annex for the Art Association of Henry County. What's the, uh, what's the Artistry Annex do?
Well, I actually started it in the old middle school building on Fourteenth Street. And I just wanted a place for local artists to sell the things they made. We have, uh, you know, oil painters and watercolor painters, and jewelry makers and pottery people. And we had about twenty there, but they had to pay rent, even though the rent was low.
Oh, okay.
And the building where we are now is part of the Art Association, and it's one of a few art co-ops in the state. Actually, it's the only one I know of where you don't have to pay rent. So we have about forty members.
Oh, wow. Forty?
Forty members, all different types of art. It's a pretty neat place, uh.
You know, podcasting isn't art.
Yeah, maybe we should rent there.
Self-invite ourselves.
You can come in. Problem we have is we're only open on Saturday from nine to three, so. But Christmas time, we do pretty well, but art's not a big seller in Newcastle. But I like people to think of us as a gift place.
I'll tell you what, it, it's come a long way in a short amount of time, though. The Robert Indiana Parkway and, and having that presence there, it's, it, I've never been an art, an art guy, like that, you wouldn't think that that's what I care, you know? It's not natural for me, but I do have an appreciation for it. Uh, and we do have, you know, having that there, having the Robert Indiana Parkway, having, having his sculptures and, and the decorations and the, you know, I know we've got the sculptures, the bicycle sculptures and others that are there. The, the community's gone a long way in, in kind of trying to establish that.
Yeah, and the good thing about art is whenever it starts to establish itself in a community, is that generally, that means that things get nicer within said community. Because, you know, there's art places, and art is always a good thing in my head, so. I, I think it's a good thing what, what the, the Art Association is, is doing.
So this is all, this has all led up to this point of you making the crazy decision about two months ago to put your name on the ballot. So we've asked this question to everybody that's been on so far. What in the world were you thinking? Why are you getting in this political game? What's, what's the, what's motivating you? What's? What, how, how'd you get off the couch and decide you needed to do this?
Well, I retired from teaching about two and a half years ago or so. And you saw how busy I used to be. So I was a little bored, and there are a few issues that I really feel strongly about. And some people asked me if I would consider it, and I thought about it today, and then I said, this might be just what I need, so.
There you go.
I got into it.
That's a good reason, is, that I've heard so far.
Some of the issues that we've, uh, that have kind of been the, the key issues in the campaign is you're, you're in a, you're in a two-way race. You're in a, uh, you're in the, you're Republican. So if somebody wants to vote for you in Henry County, you've gotta pull a Republican ballot. And, uh, you're in the county commissioner's race. You live in the northern district, uh, but it's the entire county vote. So if you live in Newcastle, if you live in, in Cambridge, well, if you have a Cambridge address.
Yeah, a lot of people don't understand that. The whole county votes for a commissioner.
You vote for a commissioner. Uh, so you're, you live, but you represent the northern third, or you have to live in the northern third to have that seat. Um, so one of the issues that we've seen, uh, be, and this isn't new this cycle, but the Henry County Jail has been a, been a topic. Uh, you, when I spoke with you on Monday, you said you had had a chance to tour it, so what'd you find? What do you think? What's the future of the jail?
Well, I toured it last week for the first time, and I was really impressed with the sheriff. I thought, uh, Rick McCorkle is doing a great job. He's passionate about what he does. And I really like that in people. I like to see people that are passionate about what they do, and he is. So whatever I say about the jail, it's no reflection on him. I think he's a great sheriff. The jail, I think, was abominable, and mainly because of the overcrowding. It was made to hold about sixty-eight to seventy-some people, and they have had up to two hundred. It's not as crowded as that now. But, uh, when I was going through, uh, my kids have never been in jail, but I was thinking, boy, oh, boy, if one of my kids did something, I wouldn't wanna see him wind up here. Uh, it's so crowded, and it, that crowding leads to violence. They have a lot of fights in the jail. Uh, it leads to vandalism. They tear the jail up. They don't have enough cameras to watch them all. They can sometimes have four or five people in a very small cell. They have three bunks in the cell, and sometimes they have to pull another mattress in there. It's just almost inhumane. I don't like to see it happen. We gotta do something about the jail. The overcrowding, I think, is the biggest problem. The jail's old, but it's not so old it couldn't be used. If we only had seventy people in there, it would be a reasonable place to hold them.
So we've, we've talked about, uh, with people, as we've, we've had this dialogue over, over the last few months on this show. Uh, counties across, all across our area, because of some changes in state law, have been filling, filling the jails up. Delaware County is converting a middle school over to become a new jail. Rush County's taken out bonds, and they're, they're building a new jail. Uh, and now on the ballot next month in, uh, Hancock County, Greenfield area, they've got a fifty-five million dollar jail budget, or fifty-five million da- dollar jail bond on the, on, you know, for the voters to say yes or no to. Uh, anything over two million dollars has to go to the voters. Uh, you can't just automatically do it. You have to, you have to basically ask permission because of the property tax caps. You know, we, we're acknowledging that Henry County has a problem, uh, with the jail. Do you, what do you, what are you advocating for at this point?
Well, the biggest problem I see is the overcrowding. They have, uh, a place right across the street from the jail where they hold the less serious crimes. Ninety percent of the people in jail are there for drugs. Uh, twenty percent of those are dealers. The rest are just people who have a drug problem.
Possession or some sort of a?
If we could get some drug programs that worked, and that's not easy. My wife works at the Anderson Center. And she sees the same people over and over again. She's been there twenty, thirty years. And it's hard to kick drug problems, but, uh, if we had a different place to house those people that was secure and that actually helped, uh, I'd be all for that. The overcrowding has, has to be dealt with.
There's a, there's a couple of different ideas that we've, that we've heard, that have come onto the show, people have talked about. One of them is the, the shell building that the county built. Uh, we've heard ideas of turning that into a jail.
Delaware County talked about doing that with theirs, so I, I don't know if, I don't know if anybody's come on this show and talked about it, but I know it's been talked about.
Yeah, we've talked about it. We've talked about it on the show before. Uh, we have a shell building. It's fifty thousand, four hundred square feet. Surely that can hold more than the little place that we have downtown. Is that feasible? I don't, I don't unders-
I haven't looked at the shell building. Butch was on a few weeks ago, and he mentioned that at one time, they talked about making a juvenile detention center into the jail, and they could've done it for about five million dollars. I don't know what, you know, stopped them from doing that, but I think I might've been for that deal. Because a new jail is gonna cost twenty, thirty million dollars at least.
I think the price tag in Rush County's in the thirty range, and you, you know, we said it's gonna be fifty-five in, in Hancock.
If we could've acted a few years ago and got it for five million, that would've been a good deal.
It would've been a great deal.
Uh, I don't know what, why they didn't do that, but now the building's being rented out, leased out, I think, for at least three years. And so I, I guess we can't use that for three years.
Yeah, there's a, the shell building is interesting, uh, cause I don't, I don't see it really working for, for the five million dollars that we could've had the youth detention center for. And frankly, I don't, I don't see it being that much cheaper than, uh, in the long run than, uh, a place that, like, building a new facility, the thirty million dollars, because of everything that would have to go, go into it.
Right. It's probably not very practical.
Yeah, that, that shell building is, is a magnet. It's, it's, right now, it's used for marketing, and, you know, the, the Economic Development Corporation shows that as a shovel-ready site, and it can be expanded. Um, I'm not sure that I would, well, first of all, I'm not sure I would've built a shell building to start with, but, um, I'm not sure that I would, I would advocate for putting the jail there.
Yeah, especially.
It kind of leads into the next part of the conversation we're gonna have. You don't have a whole lot of industrial site space left. So there's, there's talk of the commissioners putting this hundred and thirty-acre site, a hundred and forty-acre site off Three Hundred South, uh, letting it go light industrial. I'm not sure, you know, I'm not sure that converting this over to, to jail use when you're potentially taking rural residential or farm ground and turning it into light industrials, the, the path we wanna go, but.
They approved that last night.
They did do that, okay. So where, where were you on that conversation? Were you?
I think they should've took a little more time, because I'm sure there are other places they could've explored. They looked at that one because a couple local entrepreneurs bought the land and tried to get it rezoned for that. Uh, I think there were a lot of people in the courthouse that didn't like the idea. And just a few that did like it. I see the need for it. I don't know if that's necessarily the best place to put it. I think they should've taken a little more time and looked around the county to see if there was a place they could've had that didn't disturb so many people.
So the, the, this is the, probably a philosophical thing, that we probably wanna learn about you and have, share your philosophy on, you know, we, we have a central, uh, not a central plan, but a comprehensive plan that the county has paid for and is, is in the process of adopting. It's gone through a steering committee and the planning commission, and that's in the commissioner's desk. Uh, and they continue to tweak it and make modifications. As a general rule, and we can get into wind later, but as far as land use and the maps that are in that comprehensive plan, is that, do you agree with that direction, or are there changes you think that they should be making that are better uses of our area than, than what they've got shown in there now?
Well, first off, I would've never spent a hundred and ten thousand dollars of taxpayer money to have anyone make a plan. And the way it came about, they just put together groups of people, had them explore different problems. And they sort of acted like the facilitator for it, and then stuck it all together. We could've done that. The, the people on the little focus groups, they didn't get paid.
No, I was, I was on the focus group. I didn't get paid at all.
I don't know why we needed a company that we had to pay a hundred and ten thousand dollars with to, with all the other problems we have. There, there aren't very many companies I would pay that kind of money for their advice. And it seemed like it was changed for political reasons a few times.
I, I can agree with that.
Right, so.
Squeaky wheels definitely make, make changes, right?
Yeah, so I would, I was, I'd be against, I'm against most studies and things like that where you spend a lot of taxpayer money. We have enough problems. Uh, even the, you know, people always talk about the roads, and we'll probably talk about that a little bit later, but we don't have a hundred and ten thousand dollars to waste, and I think that was a waste.
So as a county commissioner, you are, you have oversight over the county, county planning commission. You may be one of the members. The commissioners get one, one member there. Uh, right now, I think Eddie Eno serves in that role. And I, I think it, it may rotate year to year. Um, but if, if something comes out of that group, it comes to the commissioners to be approved. What sort of decision-making process will you have? You said you wanna take time and listen to, you know, listen to input from the community. What, you know, I guess, do you anticipate stopping projects that come out of the planning commission and saying, no, I wanna, I wanna reject that? Uh, uh, as, as a rule or to, as a protection measure for the community? What, what do you see your role?
Depends on their logic and how well they thought it out before it got to the commissioners. But as a commissioner, if I, if I were lucky enough to get that job, I think I would take my time and be very careful. I would listen to all sides. And I don't have any trouble making decisions. I've made decisions all my life. Uh, I have lots of jobs where I had to make decisions, but I think sometimes we don't explore all the options. And I think I'm pretty good at coming up with options, even for the jail. I think I could come up with a lot of different options that would put off buying a brand-new jail right away, uh, because we're still in debt for the, uh, Justice Center. And it doesn't look like we're gonna have the money for a new jail for a few years at least, even if, but I, something has to be done, and we can't wait a few years. We've gotta do something about the jail now.
Done now.
Right.
Yeah. There's, I mean, there's lawsuits and, and things that have been filed against, against the commissioners because of the, the state of the jail. That's, yeah. I mean, I know that we already talked about that, but it is a big deal. Uh, I, we've talked about it a lot on the show.
In fact, even if I lose this race, I think I might get involved in trying to help with that problem because I was really, uh, moved when I looked at that jail. I'd be ashamed to have to, I, and I saw some people in there that I knew, kids that I had taught in school.
Oh, yeah.
That's not easy at all, is it?
And I didn't, I liked it.
Yeah, that's pretty rough, actually. Alright. That was a heavy moment.
So we're, we're talking about land use, and the big, the big land, the, the thousand-pound elephant, or the ten-thousand-pound elephant in land, in land use has been industrial wind. Uh, you have definitely been on the o- opposition side to, to having industrial wind, or at least you're interested in a different ordinance than what we have now. So I guess we'll give the floor to you and explain where you're at on that, if it's a total prohibition, if we need a different ordinance, or what's your, what's your campaign's position is on, on industrial wind. And I, I think there's at least two, maybe three projects that are potentially coming to Henry County.
Right, and I am totally against all of them. Not so much because I'm totally against wind. I don't think it's very good. I think it's going to be obsolete before it does anyone any good. Uh, but this is a window of opportunity for these wind turbine companies because of the way the federal government is. There's a lot of money to be made quickly, and our county is just too densely populated to even consider this. And I think about half the county probably doesn't consider it a very serious problem because if you live in Newcastle or Knightstown, it doesn't mean as much to you as the people who live out in the county. But to me, it's a simple decision to make, and I, I do not understand why it's taking so long. Uh, you know, when Butch was on here a couple of weeks ago, he said something to the effect that when it was over, and they're about to pass something, I think, here in the next month or two.
There, the commissioners are rewriting the WEX ordinance, the Wind Energy Conversion System ordinance.
And he said, when that passed, whatever they decide to do with it, that the commissioners wouldn't be happy. The big farmers wouldn't be happy. The people protesting the turbines wouldn't be happy. And I remember, I was listening, and I said, what do you mean? Why would you pass something that makes no one happy? You know, that doesn't make sense to me. And that's, that's, it wouldn't even work out that way. Somebody's gonna be happy. Either people are gonna be happy because no turbines are coming into this county, or the big farmers are gonna be real happy because they are coming in.
So do you think that they're dead now without, without abatements, or do you think that the wind companies could still come in even if, if no changes are made right now? Or do you think these projects are dead? And they have to do something to make them come back to life, or what we're?
They're not dead because they're signing leases as we speak, you know? Only about a hundred and twenty-five lease signers in the county, but they are still trying to recruit more. And of that hundred and twenty-five, there's really only seven or eight pretty big farmers that are putting the most pressure on, on this issue. But to me, it's almost a moral issue. It's, it's a property issue. You libertarians ought to appreciate that, that, uh, I don't understand how these five-hundred-foot towers can get anyone's permission. And they do affect other people's property.
Yeah, the, the property value issue is definitely the most concrete in my mind that arguments against wind energy that I've heard is that they, they do and that, that shows that whenever wind farms go up, those in the immediate vicinity are so that, that would be a big concern for me, but obviously so it's, it's not a concern for me right now, but it could for county if other businesses and more taxpayers.
Try rig over there Dakota. I think they're losing audio on the, uh, on the live. So they let you reset the, the high rig and see what happens. Angry. You have a lot of people listening and watching at all at the same time.
Let's start over.
So the, uh, Amber says, just everything you said. If you missed everything we said, the, the replay will be on, on the podcast. So you can jump on there and you can get the podcast on bosshogliberty.com.
Or the YouTube.
If you missed it or on, or on the YouTube.
Dakota said he was for wind farms.
He convinced him right there in that moment. He convinced him to be pro-wind.
Well, it's funny because obviously that property value issue is important. I'm fortunate, I'm old enough, my house is paid for. If I lose money, I lose money.
Oh, wait a minute, you're missing out on that three-thousand-dollar mortgage, mortgage tax, uh, credit. What are you, crazy?
But I, I would feel sorry for young people who have just built houses, have big mortgages and they would be upside down in their house. And besides that, uh, just the intrusion on the quiet, peace and quiet, that's why people move to the country. So that they can have peace and quiet. Oh, I, I got a couple illustrations just in, uh, something's. Just a few weeks ago, I saw an article in a, I don't know if it was a magazine or some pamphlet or whatever called the fence post. It was in Nebraska. And it was a county councilman who voted for wind farms in Nebraska and his wife. They both supported it, thought it was a great idea until they got them. After they put them in, they both complained about the red lights flashing at night and the noise they made. Now, I am hard of hearing, so I don't hear much noise. I've been out in Randolph County, listened. I don't hear a lot, but a lot of people do. The problem with this one is they were a mile and a half away from the closest turbine in Nebraska. And they were bothered by the lights and the noise and they were very sorry that they got them put in.
So you said a mile and a half. We'll, we'll, we'll leave this topic at that one, I guess. Is there a setback, you know, i- in the county or is it just a prohibition? The WEX ordinance should be, there, there will be no industrial wind turbines built in the county. There's no setback number. It's just, if you go over here, you know, it's no.
The wind companies themselves have the setbacks, I think, from sixteen-hundred to nineteen-hundred as a danger area.
Two thousand feet. What was it before? Before this was done, what was the number? Was it, before this adjustment was being made? Was it a thousand or fifteen-hundred for Henry County?
Right now, it's fifteen-hundred from, from your house, foundation of your house and much closer than that from your property line. But, uh, people tell me all the time that, oh, they've got them all over Europe. They're not having a problem with them, but they are having a problem with them. In fact, uh, Germany and Poland have just changed their setbacks and they've had them for years and years and years and they changed it to two thousand meters, which is over
About six thousand feet.
Over a mile and
It could end up changing the, the setback. We don't have that, we don't subsidize these and, and manufacturers actually they evolve their product more before, uh,
I don't think they'll ever build them if they're not.
Yeah.
They're just not worth it.
That's kind of the position I've taken because I'm, I'm a candidate as well. I'm running for the Henry County Council and half of Henry Township and I've said I wouldn't vote for an, an abatement and based on that, I don't know that they would happen because they, they require a county tax abatement. Uh, and I, I've counted the votes on the council now and the people that are running. I don't see the votes being there to give an abatement, so I, I feel like everybody's really upset over this issue, but I'm not sure the votes are there to make it happen to actually go forward anyway.
I hope there's enough votes to stop the abatement, but I have heard some people say they don't need the abatement, that they could put them in without the abatement because the money they get from the federal government is enough that it would still be profitable. I don't, I don't know if that's true or not.
You had Jonathan Lamb on, on Monday. Did you, at your event, did you talk to him about wind at all? Did you hear, did you just talk about federal, federal subsidies and energy?
Not with, not with Lamb. I did talk to Rokita about that and he didn't seem to know much about it. He didn't think it was a very big issue. But I assured him that there were thousands of voters out here that do care about the issue.
Interesting. So there, there's not an anti-wind candidate on the federal level of the three Republicans running for senate that you're aware of?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Not, not who I've heard speak out about it.
Interesting.
Uh, but when I look at this county though, when Susan Yoon ran last election, seven thousand votes and you should be able to appreciate this as a libertarian because she ran as an independent.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's not easy. You have to, you're, you're going against the headwinds of automatic Democrat and automatic Republican vote, vote getters.
And I had a councilman, actually I won't mention names.
Oh, come on. It's, we're all friends here.
He, he told me that Susan Yoon got the boost because of the big Republican turnout and she ran it. I said, no way, you know, it was Eddie Yanos that got the boost. But I don't know how you could even logically say that she got a boost.
Susan had an impressive, very impressive number for an independent. She was, she won, she won a pretty, or won, uh, won a township. I think she won Dudley Township, so.
I looked back twenty years and I saw for independents or third-party candidates, votes like fifty-seven, two-hundred-and-thirty, three-hundred-and-ten, nowhere near. No, no one ever got a thousand.
Oh, yeah. She did a great job. She really did. Her and David both.
Seven thousand.
All right. So let's, uh, let's, let's pivot a little bit. We're talking about local government in general and transparency and we've, you know, we've talked on this show about, you know, being able to hear meetings and see what's going on in meetings and, and being able to get to meetings, council meetings at three o'clock during the workday. What, uh, what steps would you take or do you think we need to take steps towards transparency in, in county government, public meetings?
Well, first of all, for people like me and a lot of other people, you go to a public meeting, you should be able to hear what's being said. You know, the sound system is horrible. Can't hear what the people are saying. Uh, I can't imagine, you could have easily taken that hundred and ten thousand we spent on a study and for a whole lot less than that, got some decent microphones and a sound system so people could understand what's going on.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot of things in there that need done for audiovisual equipment as well. Um, just the sound, the echo in there. I mean, it's a literal echo chamber in, inside that old courthouse and
Gonna have Dakota go in with all these sound tiles. We're gonna, we're gonna fix that place up.
Hey, I offered my services to.
This is a first-class outfit here.
Not bad for a spare bedroom in Newcastle, Indiana, huh?
You could have, could you, you could jam them all in here, maybe.
We could have the whole council in here. We'd have to have a couple more cameras, but, uh, yeah, we could have the whole county council, all the commissioners. They could have their meetings in here if they wanted to.
And the people could just watch them on the podcast. They'd, they'd learn a lot more than
That's a great idea.
Than they're learning in the
Instead of me going to them, they need to come to me. We'll rent it out to them. I, I agree though, with a hundred and ten thousand dollars that we spent on that, I definitely would have put up some sound tiles for a hundred and ten grand. I mean, I would have done that for, for days.
Well, the honest
While we're talking about money, just in the short time I've been looking into things, there's, there's, I think, a lot of money wasted in the county.
The problem we get into is a lot of these, the state government has set up county government a way that we have, we have lanes we have to run in, right? So you can only spend certain dollars on certain things and you can't decide to take something out of bucket A and put it into bucket B. So the money, a portion of the money that, the largest portion that paid for that hundred and ten thousand dollar comprehensive plan came from food and beverage money because the comprehensive plan is used for, you know, economic development, stimulus, tourism and that kind of falls in that bucket. We can't take that money and say, okay, we're gonna build a jail or we're gonna put that on roads or we're gonna put it on, um, you know, uh, AV equipment in the, the county commissioner's meeting room. Uh, it could have gone to Moore Park. It could have gone to different places, but if we're gonna have that food and beverage tax, the state legislature says we can only spend it on certain things. That's the trick of it all and one of the reasons I'm so frustrated with government in general is because you've got, you know, you're trying to operate a government that your hands are tied behind your back and you've got certain lanes you can get into.
If you look at the fire department, the fire building they want to build in Bluntville.
Yes.
And I'm all for those people having a new fire station. They need it.
So they raised, uh, or they, they applied for a federal grant and it's like a blessing and a curse. They got a grant for probably ninety percent of the money they need, but then they come to the county and said, hey, you've got about three weeks to give me fifty thousand dollars or we lose a half million dollars in construction in the county. Guns to your head, Ed. What are you gonna do?
What I, I hate to say it, but I looked at the building that they're gonna get for five hundred thousand. They got five hundred thousand dollar grant. They need another fifty-seven thousand. When I saw that drawing, I couldn't believe it. It was a pole barn with four garage doors. I took it over to De Bruel. I bought a copy of the blueprint on thirty-eight. I said, have you guys seen this building? Cause they build those types of buildings. They did. No, they didn't get the bid on it. They didn't hear about it. A company in Pendleton got the bid called Fredericks. I said, ballpark me a figure on this building. It's forty, fifty by sixty, I believe. All metal building, metal roof. He said forty-five thousand dollars. Now, obviously you have to pair four eight-inch concrete pad. It had a little office in the back, two bathrooms. I don't know if it was insulated or not. There's a spec book about this thick from the grant people.
It is spec book because, because as, as a federal grant, all of a sudden you have to comply with all the federal government responsibilities.
But essentially what you're getting is maybe a hundred and fifty thousand dollar building for five hundred thousand and that's not enough. You gotta go to the county and ask for more money. Something's wrong there.
So where did that one land? That one, I guess the council at their next meeting has to deal with that, that issue.
They're gonna decide at the next meeting whether they're gonna give them the money or not. I was at the, uh, town board meeting at Sulphur Springs last night or the night before Tuesday night, I think. I asked them, they have a very nice fire station. I asked, how much did your fire station cost? They said, well, we got a lot of help, uh, volunteer help, whatnot, but altogether it costs sixty thousand dollars. It's very nice. It's brick. It's so a half a million dollars ought to build a fire station.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's amazing what happens when you get federal dollars involved in something, isn't it?
Well, I used to work for the federal government. I saw a lot of waste. I could tell stories about waste, but
So, so you're advocating for the council to say, no, let's reposition and let's make a different decision.
Well, if, if one town can build a perfectly good firehouse for sixty thousand, it would be a shame to lose a grant for a half a million, but on the other hand, I don't like to see even the federal government spending half a million dollars on something that's worth a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, the, uh, and thi- this money is not, it's not general fund money that they're talking about. This is the, uh, the, the, the one percent, uh, public safety, the local option income tax. That's where this, this bucket would come from.
I'm not sure where it comes from. I was just upset that they had to ask for it.
Right. Oh, I understand. I understand. Um, all right. So the, uh, I guess the next major issue we have to chat about was the, was roads. County commissioner, all of a sudden you get, you get to go to road school. They send you to Purdue University and you're responsible for ditches and drainage and eight hundred miles of county road. So I'm gonna be the first guy in line at Ed Tarantino's office saying Jeffrey Street's a mess and I need paved. What, how are you gonna say Jeremiah, get in line?
Well, I tried to go to that road school as a candidate. I couldn't get in, I guess, but, uh, so I don't know a whole lot about roads except that we have eight hundred miles of roads, probably on a hundred, two-hundred mile budget. So, no matter who's commissioner, there's gonna be road problems. There's gonna be a lot of potholes. I would just say that I would certainly look at dangerous conditions first. And I'm sure they do to a certain extent. I'm not an expert on roads. They told me they did fifty miles of road last year and they had a million-dollar grant from the, uh, state. Even at that rate, if you just do fifty miles, it would take you sixteen years to pave the roads in the county.
It doesn't buy you any bridges either.
The roads don't last sixteen years. They last three or four years and they need repair, so you're, you're in a catch-up mode all the time.
It's a snake eating its tail at, at this point.
Yeah, I, uh, either we have to find ways to get more money, some innovative ways, find better ways. I've, I've heard some other counties have pretty good ways. I, I haven't gotten a chance yet. I have talked to, uh, the people in our county about the roads. I can't promise to fix all the potholes, but I will look for dangerous areas. I know, I, I don't know what's going on here with this, but I heard we're gonna get another six hundred some odd thousand from the state and most of it's going for signs.
Yeah, I believe that it actually has to go to signs though. We don't, we don't really just allocate those funds to the signs. But we don't, it's another one of those things where we don't have a choice.
We're gonna have some awful nice signs and some really bad roads.
Yeah.
Maybe the sign should point to the roads and say, danger area.
Yeah, the sign should say, uh, large bumps ahead or potholes ahead.
Pretty, pretty signs. I'm a sign guy. I, I appreciate six hundred thousand dollars worth of signs and terrible roads, but.
So do you think, you know, is, is chip and seal the solution or gravel roads or, or asphalt or redoing, redoing the crowns on the roads or all of the above?
People wouldn't like to go back to gravel roads. Uh, I lived on a gravel road here for many, many years. A lot of dust. Bothered my wife more than it bothered me, but, uh,
Yeah, can't really keep your vehicle clean on a gravel road.
Yeah, I hardly ever wash my vehicle. My wife washed, she, she washes hers though. We have a gravel drive. She makes me, she hardly ever lets me drive her car.
Wait, let's, let's, let's learn something about here. What do you drive and what's the wife drive? Let's, let's, let's figure this out. What are, what are you not allowed to drive?
What do I drive right now? I have one of the nicest cars I've had in my whole life. It's because it's my wife's old car. She has a Subaru.
Oh, nice. Indiana made, probably, huh?
I don't know.
Lafayette.
So, uh, and she likes that, doesn't like me to drive much. I say, I'm the man. I'm supposed to drive. She says, not this, not this vehicle. But, uh, I drive a two thousand ten Hyundai.
Really?
But I do like it.
Now, wait, this is a Chrysler town. You're driving around in an import? That's dangerous.
I know, but, and all her family work for Chrysler too.
And what's your, uh, dream car? If you could have any car, what would it be?
I don't really care much about cars.
Don't care.
The favorite car I, I've ever had, I did buy, what year was that? I think it was a seventy-eight Lincoln. Town car.
That's the, that's the kind of song Jim Varney sing about hot rod Lincoln.
I bought it only about nineteen eighty-five. I loved the car. Gas wasn't too expensive. It was a great car to take a long drive in. It had leather seats. It had power, everything. What I really liked is it had high beams. It turned itself on and off, turned themselves on and off.
Automatically.
Yeah.
Cars come and they did it.
Cause I, I'll put my high beams on, driving out in the country and then I forget to turn them off.
It's a good way to end up in that county jail you're in.
It's bad, bad. But that Lincoln, it was a great car. People borrowed it to take it on vacation. But other than that, I have no dream car.
I could see you rolling up in like a, a Viper.
I was thinking, I think he, he's more of a Lamborghini guy.
Yeah, I doubt it.
All right. So the, uh, the last issue we've, we've been talking about on this show, uh, and you have a big oversight responsibility if you're, if you're a park, uh, if you are a county commissioner, is Memorial Park. Um, there's a number of different projects and plans and things that are going on out there. Uh, last night I understand that they, the commissioners voted to make it a national historic site. Um, there's a statue that's a part of the Big Hope Initiative program that's out there and the, the project that started last June. The Doughboy statue has been something that's been hotly debated over the last few months and refurbishment and relocation of it. Um, there's the interface with the Henry County Saddle Club. I guess we'll start with, do you, do you want us to have a county park? Is that some? Um, there's the interface with the Henry County Saddle Club. I guess we'll start with, do you, do you want us to have a county park? Is that something that you think we should have? Should the county be funding it? Cause we're looking at some big financial shortcomings for the park and, you know, if you look at the Umba report, we've got long-term financial issues for the park. Should we have it? Should we be, you know, should the Smith building continue? Should this doughboy thing be a deal? Where, what, what's your view on the park? Is it, you know, start there and we'll, we'll, we'll have a conversation?
Well, we already have the park and it has a lot of memorials there. I think we have to keep the park.
Okay.
It's a great place to go. I've walked through it many times. Yeah, I certainly think we should keep the park. I don't think the park has to necessarily be a real expensive thing to keep. I'm not sure the numbers on how much money it costs to keep that park open, but yeah, I'd be in favor of keeping it.
Sure. Well, it, as a, I, I was a member of the park board for a couple of years. Uh, the park board budget's between hmm, a quarter and a half million dollars a year. Uh, an awful lot of that goes to salary and about a hundred thousand dollars actually operates the maintenance and utilities of the, of the structures and the buildings that are out there. Uh, I talked about this with Betsy last week. The budget for the park is roughly the same now as it was in nineteen ninety-two. So you don't see a lot of changes or additional, additional revenue coming out there. Um, so because of that, we, you know, we saw the park needed a roof for, uh, for the shelter house. They paid for that by selling some timber out of there, trying to help have the park pay for itself. That was somewhat controversial. Um, and from that, we wound up with the Friends of Memorial Park, which is, is a private or five oh one C three that's helping to pay for some of the offsetting cost, some of the costs that are out there. But the Friends of Memorial Park has been involved with this doughboy relocation. If you are the county commissioner, you have, I guess, we heard Butch say last time that the commissioners could get involved if they wanted to, uh, with this doughboy thing. If it's still not resolved by the time you're there, do you have an opinion? Would you leave it as it is or let the park board decide what they decide?
I really hope it's resolved bef, before I get there, if I do get there. Uh, I have talked to both sides, several people on both sides. And I've told them all that I am going to stay neutral on it because I feel like the wind issue is the biggest issue in the county. I'm glad that, uh, Steve Peckinpah raised some money, got it fixed up. I can see the side of people say they want to keep it where it originally was and I see the other side too. So I want to stay neutral on that. I don't want to say either way. I'm just one person right now. I hope it's resolved before I get in. I could make a decision on it if I had to. Uh, but I, right now I am neutral.
Okay.
I'm not even edging. I am neutral. I've talked to veterans on both sides of it.
Well, that's an important distinction is that there are liter, there are veterans that feel very passionately on both sides of, both sides of the issue. And I think there's a number of people that just, you know, that's, they're, they're neutral, just like you are. They don't have, they don't strongly feel either way. Um, so that's a.
And I just, I'm in a controversial issue already. I don't want to be in, I don't want to be in two.
All right. So let's talk, uh, for a minute about appointments. Cause you, as a commissioner, you would have appointments to the park board, to the planning commission, to others. What, what sort of, um, matrix or, uh, template do you have when you're going out finding somebody to appoint? You, how would you handle appointments? What are you looking for in an appointee?
Well, you just interview people. Like I said before about the sheriff, I think he's passionate about what he does. I would look for people who are, that have the right motives for taking on responsibility like that. And sometimes it's hard to read people's motives, but I think if you ask enough questions and you hear their responses, but I'd be looking for people who are civic minded.
A lot of times when you see these boards, you almost see automatic reappointments to people. Should, should people that are serving on boards now feel like, yeah, it's just going to be an automatic reappointment or are you going to have a, should they be expecting changes if you, if you have a say on some of these boards?
I, I like innovators. Like when even to talk about Memorial Park, uh, there are ways. There are lots of people in the county that enjoy the park. And there are ways the park could raise more money to take care of itself. And innovative people figure out innovative ways to make money.
Very good.
If you want the park, somebody has to pay for it.
You have to pay for it. Yep. It's a very fair point.
Put in a quarter, see a duck. That's the, uh, the first recreation model, right?
Yeah, we should have some little duck feeders out there. Maybe some turkey feeders eventually.
Yeah, yeah. Cemetery can monetize Eric the Turkey all they want to. I think they'd be some, they've, they've got some options.
That's right. It's Eric the Turkey.
I thought it was Free Bird.
Well, it's on the Facebook. It's been claiming that its name is Eric.
Yep.
All right. So we're getting to that part in the show where we probably have to do final thoughts. Unfortunately, we're winding down. Ed, if people want to volunteer for your campaign, help you out, send more money, what, uh, how do they help you out? I, I imagine you're still walking or have, have teams of people going out door to door in the county. You've got fifty thousand people to reach between now and May.
Yeah, it's hard to reach them.
Or May eighth.
I, I try to reach them on Facebook. I do have a Facebook page that's, and sometimes people get confused with my Facebook page. And, uh, my campaign Facebook page, the one with the flag picture is my campaign Facebook page. Uh, I'd like people to try to find that.
And we've got it tagged. If you're watching here, you can, you can click on Ed's deal so you can find his, his stuff, his link there.
I'm going to be writing several more things next few weeks. Uh, I get out, I knock on doors. I meet people, I meet dogs. I meet all sorts of.
We talked about that Monday. That's the thing that we're, anybody that's run for office, you, you immediately look at each other and go, I've seen some mean dogs.
Yeah. Yeah, the dogs. But I'm having pretty good success. When I get to talk to people, I, I get a lot of my signs put out. So I'm happy about that.
Very neat.
I've seen a lot of your signs coming home from work every day. I, I go down two thirty-four, I see them all the time. I like them.
Yeah.
They're all over the place.
All right. If they want to, if they want to send some checks in for, uh, for the Tarantino campaign, how's that work? Are, are you still taking money or you're full up?
Well, we probably need some for newspaper advertising. That'll be probably big in the next few weeks. So if anybody did want to send anything in, our treasurer's at, uh, Dickerson Accounting on Seventeenth Street and they can drop it off there. They can give it to myself or anyone that, one of my fourteen K campaign managers.
How in the world did you get yourself fourteen campaign managers? How, how'd this happen?
Well, they, they told me to get a campaign manager and I, as being a school teacher, a lot of my friends are liberal Democrats. And the Republicans aren't crazy about having a liberal Democrat as a campaign manager. I did ask one. I was, but they, they also work all day. So I try to do a lot of things myself and then a lot of the people that are helping me, they work all day. So I don't like to put too much on them. A lot of people helped me paint those signs you see all over the county. They gave up like five Saturdays in a row to paint signs.
I, I did see the pictures of you had a ton of people working at one time to get all the signs painted.
Where'd you guys, where'd you paint all those?
Uh, we painted them at the Artistry Annex.
There you go.
Very cool. All right. Well, we appreciate you joining us. Hopefully, uh, hopefully you enjoyed this and, uh.
Had a good time.
If, uh, if anybody missed out on some of the audio that was here, once again, the, the MP three podcast, you can get on iTunes. That'll be, uh, that'll be easy to, easy to go back and catch anything if we lost any of it. Uh, Chase, you got any final thoughts for us? I knew you didn't really have a chance to, to prepare anything.
No, but I've been thinking, okay?
All right.
Okay. If you were listening last week, you heard me give a couple of options of what I'm going to do when we move the doughboy.
Oh boy.
Okay.
Uh-oh, here we go again.
Our, our two most.
Chase isn't neutral, Ed. He's got, he's, he's pro move.
Our, our two most popular options were Axel Rose and Reggie Miller. Okay. I like both of those. Yes, Reggie Miller, basketball player, Indiana Pacers, all-time great.
Even I know who Reggie Miller is.
Pretty cool. Funky teeth. Anyways, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add a new option. Is it, what's the turkey's name?
Eric.
Eric.
Eric the Turkey.
Eric Free Bird the Turkey. We could, we could get a statue of him or we could even put him in a little cage and make it into like a petting zoo.
You're going to put him in the new location or the old location?
Old location. That way people actually know where it's at because most people don't.
That turkey wants to be free.
Yeah, that's Free Bird. We're going to lock him up.
We can make a big, a big bird pen. I'm just saying. Tons of people will be at the park that way. Like eight hundred and something. How many, how many likes does he have on Facebook?
I heard it's over eight hundred likes.
Over eight hundred.
Eight hundred and five, I think.
I'm just saying you could put a concession stand right next to it. I think it'd be a great idea. I think it'd bring the, the park a lot, lot of money. So, and then other than that, um, I don't have any new updates about the headless chicken. He, I think he's still alive. So that's good news.
Thank you for updating us on the poultry, yes.
All right, that's it.
All right.
All right. So, uh, for my final thoughts, I just want to say thank you to all the Patreon subscribers again. Audrey and I put out our last tinfoil time on Tuesday and we talked about, uh, Queen Elizabeth the second and whether or not she kidnaps children and is a cannibal. And you can hear that if you, uh, donate to the Patreon feed and, uh, I think that next week is actually going to be about Melania Trump and, uh, her having a doppelganger that, that follows Trump around if she doesn't feel like hanging out with him. So that, that's, uh, that's next week's conspiracy theory. Uh.
I really don't understand this extra show you guys have thrown around, but apparently people like it, so.
Queen Elizabeth wasn't a cannibal?
Well, I mean, that's, some people actually believe that. Well, we did, we, we set out and did all the research, why people believe that, tried to prove them wrong and, uh.
And you guys determined that she's not a cannibal. She's just, she's just an old lady.
Don't ruin it for them, Jer. They need to find out.
Pay the money. I actually listened to it.
And so, uh.
She would have died of some weird brain disease is what you guys decided.
I was, I keep trying to, to like skew the votes for what I, I want to do the show on. It never works out. People want to hear about Melania Trump for some reason. Um, you can follow me on, uh, on Facebook and, uh, follow me on Twitter at Atokad Savad. It's Dakota Davis spelled backwards and, uh, get on that Patreon.
Very good. All right. Well, I'm fighting a little cold here, so I'm not going to keep anybody longer than we have to. Uh, I've got my deep radio voice.
I was going to say, you look awful.
Today. Thank you, Chase. I'm barely alive. Um, all right. So next week, Wednesday, we're not doing a show Thursday. It's Wednesday. We'll have Ken and Gray on. Uh, he's running for county council, district one in the Republican primary. That's a familiar race because that's the same race I'm running for. We both are applying for the same job.
Jer, when are you, when are you coming on the show?
I don't know and I can't get scheduled. All these people are booked on here.
Can I sit over there?
You want to sit and interview me? Can you work all these, all these controls?
No.
It's not that hard. I can teach him.
Yeah. So, uh, Kenan's coming on. He's got an event. He was a very nice sport. I, uh, we had him scheduled for Thursday of next week. And I felt terribly two weeks ago, or last week, I guess it was, two weeks before the showtime, I get a letter in the mail from the Oaks Club and said, hey, we're going to have your, your, uh, your induction nation ceremony. Uh, please bring us a check and you get to join. Uh, and it was the same day we were booked. So he agreed to move to Wednesday. He is having an event at Cafe Royal, uh, and the meet and greet. So I think from five to seven on Wednesday, you can go down, catch him, meet him in person, then get back home and, uh, and watch us on the show. So you can go meet him in person, uh, but he's, uh, he was nice enough to, uh, to adjust the day he was coming on. He's still going to have that, but the show's going to be a little later. We're going to do about seven thirty, seven forty-five, somewhere in that range next week. So.
Yep.
Appreciate everybody listening and watching. Uh, once again, shout out to that Patreon group. Thank you guys very much. Uh, very humbling uh, to have you helping us out and supporting. Uh, we've come a long way. We've got, uh, we've got our, our sure device that we, uh, we used our first month proceeds to pay for that. Uh, so we will have remote guests. Uh, Dakota and I messed around with that a little bit, found out we need a couple more cables. So we're going to go back to the well and buy some more junk. We're going to get that working and before too long, we'll have some, uh, we'll have, we're going to do some fun stuff. We're planning an election night special where we're going to send somebody down to the, uh, down to the Republican or the Democrat headquarters, maybe Chase and get some interviews.
I think it's going to be Chase.
And then we're going to do an election night show. So somebody's going to be down there with a phone. We're going to talk to people. So we're going to talk to Ed. We're going to talk to Butch, try, try to catch him on election night and see who can get on the show and have a, have a fun live program. So that's our goal. That's our first month's Patreon stuff. If we get to that five hundred a month, we are looking at possibly getting some space to get a permanent studio. Uh, so we would move out of this and move into something a little bit more permanent, but, uh, we got to get, uh, got to get the financial stability. So that's what the Patreon thing's all about. Uh, but until then, uh, we're going to keep saving the money. Uh, and we've talked about, we've had a lot of people talk about wanting to do remotes and be able to work remotely. Uh, there's a couple other equipment items that we can pick up that, uh, that'll let that happen. So two or three months down the road, we might have, uh, an additional recorder that, uh, that lets us do a mobile studio. So we've got some options.
I have a quick idea.
Yes, sir.
You know how they, they have that sad, uh, dog commercial in the arms of the angels?
Yes, the ASPA.
Yes.
Your humane society.
We should make a commercial of us crying and one of us can sing. That way it convinces people to donate.
I don't want this to sound like church where we're just banging on people. Uh, uh, I, I just want people, if you can give five bucks, ten bucks, help us out, kick it in. Uh, that's what keeps us going. We're not, uh, every nickel we're getting out of this is going right back into the show. Yeah, it's a tie.
Ten percent.
All right. Thank you guys very much. We'll see you next Wednesday.